Twenty twenty four and the time is six P M. The time is six oh eight. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe our important work being done on behalf of all district state. Um, we do have Ben Miller on Zoom tonight, so all of our voting um actions will be a roll call vote. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file.
We do. We have several items in the table file this evening. We have personnel appointments, a few uh appointments. We have a number of increased, decreased changes in in assignment. We do have a uh leave of absence. And we have several retirements, resignations, and terminations.
Good, thank you. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? By what second by check? Thank you. Right, I need to facilitate a roll call vote.
Butler.
Aye.
Burwitz.
Hi.
Miller.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Gonzalez, George.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, and we do not have anyone sign up for public comment, so we will move on to item four. And item four on our agenda tonight is announcements and recognition, starting with Northfield Early Childhood Family Education's Newborn Baby Talk Program. Um, they were the recipient of the Minnesota Association for Family and Early Education Innovative Programming Award. And Director of Community Education, Erin Bailey, will present certificates to the districts as co-sponsors of this program. Um, Northfield Hospital and Clinics and Rice County Public Health Nursing Service. Welcome, Erin. Welcome on.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I am going to share a little bit about the Newborn Baby Talk Program, but first just want to introduce the actual recipients of this award. I am joined by Lisa Bauer from Northfield Hospitals and Clinics. Ellen Hafner, who is our district's parent educator, and Sarah Line, who is our early childhood coordinator. Newborn Baby Talk began in Northfield in two thousand in collaboration with Rice County Public Health and Northfield Hospitals and Clinics. The original model provided free year-round class for parents of newborns birth to eight weeks old. Each collaborating partner contributed staff. Public Health contributed a nurse. The hospital provided a lactation consultant. And the in community education provided the parent educator. Care for older siblings and classroom space is also what the school district provided. It was advertised through Community Education's Early Childhood Family Education, or ECFE. And families were encouraged to attend the class at at the hospital discharge. Both parents are always invited to attend, and while some do, the vast majority of attendees are moms. Each week, moms connect, ask questions, rec- receive feeding support, and get their baby weighed. The class eventually became a twelve-week program. The curriculum rotates, so moms attending receive up to twelve different topics depending on when they begin class. Surprisingly, this newborn baby class is not offered in many other districts. After Ellen presented about Baby Talk at the annual Minnesota Edu- Minnesota Association for Early and Family Education, Manafi Conference in two thousand twenty-three. ECFE programs across the state uh are working in collaboration with their public health hospitals and clinics to replicate the class in their districts. Newborn programming is now offered in New Prague, Owatonna, and Anoka Henepin. And it is actually a staff member from the Anoka Henepin School District who nominated um all of these fine women for this award. In the last two years, Baby Talk has provided support for two hundred and twelve new moms from Northfield and area communities. Most of them attend the attend one class before returning. Well, um, attend this one class before returning to work full-time, though a few continue on through ECFE. For many many families, it is their first experience with the Northfield School District. This is one mom's quote. What an incredibly valuable resource the Northfield community has. I have friends in other cities who do not have this, and I feel bad that they don't have a place where they can be validated, encouraged, and grounded as a new mom. Thank you for providing this. Northfield Public Schools and ECFE are thankful for the continued collaboration of Northfield Hospitals and Clinics and Rice County Public Health for the last twenty-four years to provide care and support to the area's young families and the district's future students. And with that, we have a a permanent plaque that will hang in the Northfield Community Education Center where Baby Talk always happens. And then we have certificates. We will get one to Rice County Public Health as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, everyone.
Okay, item five tonight is discussion and reports.
Have a few other announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, so you just have a few other announcements this evening. Uh, we want to congratulate NHS student Elizabeth McCormick, who graduated from the FBI National Academy Associates Youth Leadership Program in Quantico, Virginia. The program offers lifelong enrichment opportunities to support exceptional young leaders' drive for knowledge and their desire to make a difference in the world through service. The program offers eight days of leadership and fitness training and an immersive experience in the Washington, D.C. area. And participants must have demonstrated high academic standards and good citizenship to be nominated for the program. We just want to congratulate Elizabeth. Quite the honor to be part of the program and just have heard it was an excellent experience for her. Uh, some really great news today from uh Activities Director John Mahal. Your Northfield Raiders Girls Hockey Team will be part of Hockey Day Minnesota twenty twenty-five. So Hockey Day is a statewide celebration of Hockey Day Minnesota. And uh, the organization is pitting our Raiders off against what has become a pretty uh good rivalry with the Orano Spartans. And so they will face off in Shakopee on January twenty-third. And it's really a great opportunity to showcase our amazing girls hockey program statewide in the state of hockey. So a a great piece for them. We also want to congratulate uh the Raiders Skeet Team, who successfully defended their two A championship last week, so they've won back-to-back championships. The Raiders finished twenty-two points ahead of second place with a score of four hundred and fifty-five. The top honors went to Tad Stanton, who was the High Gun overall and the High Gun for the male category. Jaden Schultz tied for High Gun female category and took second place on the reverse run. And we want to congratulate Ava Miller, who also took third place in the High Gun uh female category. And this championship was just one of numerous significant victories for the program this season. By way of example, the Clay Target Team finished eleventh at the state tournament and collectively hit four hundred and seventy-one of five hundred targets. That's a pretty good a response there. So we want to congratulate head coach Beat Mergans and the dozens of volunteer coaches and all the athletes on a successful season. And then this is a follow-up to our uh discussion about early childhood recently. Uh, we're really happy to share with you that Northfield Public Schools was recently awarded twenty-eight voluntary pre-kindergarten seats from the Minnesota Department of Education. In the past, we have had zero. So twenty-eight is a lot more than zero. And uh, these voluntary preschool seats will increase enrollment at hand-in-hand preschool. And importantly, it allows expansion for a free full-day preschool experience. Most preschool experience is half-day. But this is going to allow expansion of a free full-day preschool. So um, beginning in twenty twenty-four statewide, there were four thousand existing voluntary pre-kindergarten and school readiness plus seats. They became permanently funded by the legislature, which is an important step forward. Then the bill, which helped us, also added another fifty-two hundred volunteer pre-K uh school readiness plus seats for fiscal years twenty twenty-six and later. Um, and so it results in twelve thousand three hundred and sixty of these seats statewide. So Erin, I think Erin already left, but Erin and and Sarah and the team, we have applied for BPK for as many years as I can remember. And every year we get the thing back saying, thanks for submitting. You get nothing. And this year we're getting twenty-eight. So persistence pays off and it really ties into the discussion that we had. Preschool does serve as childcare for some folks, right? But it so it braids in with the discussion that we had before, but I think there was a collective cheer when we got uh the notification that we have twenty-eight spots. So big deal. So congratulations to Erin and the team and Sarah for all the work and persistence to get those spots finally funded. That's what I got tonight.
That's terrific. Thank you. Board members, do you have any um items you'd like to submit? Yes.
I just have a question about the last item. Are those spots going to be open to anybody or are they for free and reduced-price lunch people or how does that work?
Erin Bailey is going to come talk. We're just learning about it because every year we've been told we don't get any. So now we're learning about the program in greater detail.
We were awarded these spots eleven days ago. Um, and we have applied every year since two thousand sixteen when they originally funded the slots and they haven't increased it. But we apply every year to show the legislature that we are interested and we support them adding more seats. Um, so we are meeting with people tomorrow to start to learn more about these slots, but we would prioritize those students who have risk factors. And there's a a list of things that qualify through the state as those risk factors. Does that help answer your question?
Good. Anyone else? Question, comments? Thank you, Erin. Okay, we're moving on to item five. That's our discussion reports. And first step is the annual safety drill report. Dr. Hillman will present the district's safety drill report as required by Minnesota Statute one twenty-one A dot oh three seven. Building principals, um, Buildings and Grounds Department staff, and this our school resource officer are here to answer any board member of questions.
Good evening, and I would normally try to show this on the screen, but just with the way that we've got our technology working tonight, we're just going to leave it go. Everybody's got the document in their packet. So I will reference this as we go along. So we started this formal annual presentation last year. It's a requirement of the legislation that was passed in twenty twenty-three um to have a discussion about these uh drills at a public board meeting. And so some of this is what you saw last year. And then there is also some new items as well that I want to point out. We're looking at this becoming an annual school safety update, uh not only to go over the required uh discussion of the of the drills, but also just to ground the board and the public uh who are both here in person and watching online about all of the detailed work that happens uh to support school safety. Uh, we prioritize school safety and a lot goes into it. Um, but the genesis for this presentation is the legislation regarding the drills. So when we take a look at the different kinds of drills that we practice, you'll see those are in the first table. Uh, we practice an evacuation drill. This is what you would typically think of for fire drills. And so there's a required number of drills that are done each year for that. Um, a stay-put, a lockdown or a stay-put drill, it's used for when there's some kind of situation inside the building where we want to keep the hallways clear. And more often than not, this is some kind of medical circumstance in the hallway, and you'd be surprised, we have a few of these each year. Um, and really what we do with these stay-put drills is intending to give the student who is in crisis or in need an opportunity or the staff member in crisis or need to have some dignity if they need to have medical assistance. And sometimes maybe they need to go by ambulance. Sometimes it's a parent picking them up. But we just need to try to keep the hallways clear so that we can control that scenario and get that person into a position where they are as safe as they can be and that others wouldn't be disrupting any services that are being provided. So most often, that is done, that drill is or that is that is used for a medical circumstance, but it could also be used if we knew that there was a threat on the outside of the building, you know, that kind of thing. But the vast majority of the time it has been used for a medical circumstance. The duck and cover um is what we use to prepare in the event that there is a threat or an intruder inside the building. And so I want to help redefine some terms here because the legislature in twenty twenty-three really did redefine some terms that we need to be really clear about what we're talking about. So the duck and cover lockdown drill does meet the criteria for what's called an active shooter drill under state statute. But the active shooter drill is not what you think it is compared to previous language. So now if we were to what we used to call an active shooter drill was when you would have a practice where you'd have law enforcement, EMS, people who are actually role-playing the different roles. Up until last year, that's what most of us called an active shooter drill. The legislature has renamed that an active shooter simulation. We have never done an active shooter simulation when students are on campus for a regular school day. We have worked with law enforcement and regional EMS. We have been a host at our schools to do that kind of training. But it has been on a Saturday or a day when students were not in session and all the participants were volunteer participants. So it was really used as a tr- we use the building as a training exercise for regional law enforcement and emergency services. But it does not take place during the school day, and our own students are not required to be part of that. We may, we've had some theater kids from time to time who have participated willingly, and I think even been maybe given a subway sandwich for their their assistance in that plan. But that is now called an active shooter simulation. The duck and cover does qualify under, I believe qualifies under the state statute for an active shooter drill because we are preparing for the event of an armed intruder. But again, with a duck and cover, students stay in their room. They, there's a certain set of protocol. Lights go off, shades are drawn, students get away from the door. But there is no, there's no role-playing happening, but it does meet the definition of what the new active shooter definition means. So we just want to be really clear. I think when people hear active shooter, they think of a bunch of professionals who are there role-playing or practicing. That is not what it is. That's an active shooter simulation. The duck and cover is considered an active shooter drill because we are practicing the steps we would take should there be an intruder in the building. So that is what necessitates a number of other things. So, for example, we are required to alert parents at least twenty-four hours in advance if there's going to be a duck and cover drill because it does qualify in that active shooter category so that they can opt out of the drill if that we that if they would like. And this is the genesis of what asks the board to consider the two questions at a public meeting. The effect of active shooter drills on the safety of students and staff and the effect of active shooter drills on the mental health and wellness of students and staff. So that is what we call locally as the duck and cover. It does qualify under the modified state statute as an active shooter drill. The shelter and place drill is primarily used for the statewide annual tornado drill. That is really what the shelter and places. Um, it can be could be used in some other circumstances, but if you think about it, that's when the severe weather sirens go off, we typically will use that particular drill. So those are the different kinds of drills that we do to practice for what we hope are very few real-life scenarios. As I've said, obviously, the evacuation drill happens a number of times of the year, almost always planned. We've we've had a couple of times since I've been here where it's not been a planned um use of the fire drill, but we ended up doing it anyway and and thankfully all worked out. Uh, we, the stay-put is probably the most often used in the district. And again, it's almost always because there's some kind of medical circumstance. And frankly, it gives buildings the opportunity to say, you know what? We just want to control the scenario so that we can get this person to where they need to go. And so that would, in in reality, that is the one that we have used the most often. So if you go to page two, at the top of that page, I share with you uh what tools we use to execute the drills. So we do have lockdown buttons in each building. Um, when you press that button, all of the exterior doors are locked. Now, doors are locked during the school day, but in the event that they were not for some after-school or something like that, if you press that lockdown button, all of the exterior doors immediately lock if they are open and an automated call to nine-one-one happens. And I will tell you that it works uh because we have had from time to time a substitute administrative assistant who thought they were buzzing someone into the building and accidentally pull that particular lockdown button. And people show up very quickly. Um, it's amazing how fast people are on site. We get text messages. It it really, we we get to test it. It it does work. We are notified very quickly. We also do in the district office have a district-wide lockdown button that we can do that same thing, but for all of the buildings simultaneously. Uh, we also have lockable classroom doors, and I think this is worth noting uh that every classroom door can be locked from the inside. And some people might say, well, that's not that big of a deal, but the truth is for for years and years, school construction did not include the ability to lock your door from the inside. Um, so there's a variety of different tools that we have. Some of them are just a typical, you know, uh thumb switch like you have in your house. Others are a little bit more with panic hardware. You push the panic hardware and switch to the locked mode. There's probably a half a dozen of different styles throughout the district. But if you think about it in a real emergency, the ability to lock a door without fumbling for your keys and going outside to try to lock the door from the outside, that is real security. And so we uh implemented that probably about five or six years ago, I think. Um, we also have evacuation relocation and shelter and place map uh place maps throughout the district in each classroom. There are shelter and place maps uh where you go for evacuation, where you go for relocation. And then communication staff are alerted to the drill typically via email. Many of the drills also now include using the Crisis Go app. And the Crisis Go app allows us to send direct messages um and rostering to a computer device. It can go to your computer, it can go to an iPad or it can go to your cellphone. And so in an emergency situation, if our students are elsewhere than the classroom, the teachers are able to take attendance right then and there so that the office can see who has been accounted for very quickly. We started the implementation last December into January. Justin Robley and Dorothy Cohan from our Buildings and Grounds Office really led the district-wide implementation. Building principals, uh Officer Crombie were very helpful. We have gotten through several drills using those and will continue to practice that as the year um comes along. It makes a a noise on your phone like an Amber Alert does. And so it really gets people's attention. Um, and so that's another tool that we use. And then, of course, we'll also notify, as we said before, we notify families of a duck and cover drill twenty-four hours or more in advance. I'm not going to go through all of these. I will highlight a handful. Um, several years ago, I sent an email to families talking about all the different tools that we use for violence prevention. Because the most important piece of school safety is a student having a trusted adult at their school. We know that's the number one thing that helps us with school safety. And so I've given a list in this document of a variety of things that we do for violence prevention, including the prioritizing of relationship. And we actually do measure that. We measure that through surveys. We um talk with high school and middle school students and elementary students about trust. Um, and we know that a student who has a trusting adult will share things when they learn things. We know that that will happen. Um, as you board members know, we have a form of social emotional learning curriculum in pre-K through eighth grade. That's the second step curriculum. Uh, we've had the Student Supporting Students program. Uh, tenth graders at Northfield High School have been trained in uh mental health first aid. There's a little bit of a change. Last year, the tenth graders were not trained. They had been trained the year before. They'll be trained again in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's been something that we've been consistently making sure that students get that curriculum as part of their health experience so that they are able to see signs in their friends and be able to connect them with an adult should they need some additional um mental health or emotional assistance. The middle school and uh high school and ALC all have social workers, school psychologists and counselors. Elementary schools um have a licensed school social worker, a school psychologist, and a behavior coach. Uh, we also have a great relationship with our local law enforcement. In fact, our current school resource officer had a career in social work before coming into that role. Staff members were complete annually required anti-bullying training. And then something that's continued to come up as we've worked through some additional safety trainings um is that the district's multi-tiered systems of support program. Think a lot of times when we think of MTSS, we think about reading and mathematics support, how to intervene when a student is struggling with reading or mathematics. But we also have an MTSS process for behavior as well, and those systems really are helping identify students who might need additional support. We've had some additional training for staff. Just recently, around forty staff members were trained or retrained in the Prepare approach, um, which is a pro- a product of the National Association of School Psychologists. Um, we've had some people who have now completed. In fact, uh Dorothy and Justin have both completed the I Love You Guys Foundation training. And this is quickly becoming very um not just popular, but many schools are looking at this as we're learning a lot from this foundation and the work that they've done. They really do focus a lot on, we're focusing on their reunification approach, um but really great training all the way around. You all know that Minnesota School Emergency Management. Um, we had three individuals who got that uh that certification because it was presented at a recent board meeting. Um, and about eighty percent of staff have been trained in something that's called youth mental health first aid. So those are the parts about when we think about the drills that we do. That's one segment. When we think about how do we do violence prevention, I've given you some. It's not all-inclusive, but it's a pretty comprehensive list of the approaches that we use to try to make sure that we're ahead of these kinds of things. And even with all of that, um, we still investigate threats. And so we wanted to use this opportunity at this annual safety drill meeting to also discuss what happens when we we receive a threat, whether we we when we receive a threat, a threat is a threat until we've had an opportunity to investigate and determine is the threat credible or or not credible. And so you'll see on the last page and page three that um threats are in are uh all threats of violence are immediately and thoroughly investigated. That team is can include, but it's not limited to to the school administrator, the school resource officer, other law enforcement or emergency services personnel as appropriate, and in some cases, other district personnel. And we use a consistent approach investigating every single threat. No invite, no two or three threat investigations are exactly the same because the circumstances are a little bit different, but the approach, the mindset is the exact same every time. And so I've given you a list of the kinds of things that we do as part of an investigative uh investigating a threat. And this is included, but it's not limited to because the the circumstances surrounding the issue might prompt something different, but it can include interviewing the student who is the students involved, interviewing staff, searching a person's backpacks, vehicles or lockers, given the given what the threat may be, reviewing video footage if it's available, home visits by law enforcement. So law enforcement going and doing an at-home check to make sure that the circumstances are safe. Discussions with family members about do, does the student have access to weapons outside of school? What are the safety precautions if a family does um have weapons in their home? And then again, based upon the circumstances, a number of other investigative steps uh can take place. And we really look at, as as Gabriel, our school resource officer has said to me a number of times, it's this approach with the totality of the circumstances. So you look at all of the information that you have. You're investigating any alleged threat from all sides, and you're coming to a determination of what is the likelihood that the threat could be acted upon. And so we use this tiered threats assessment system, and we use the same approach every single time. And we don't have a ton of these things, thankfully, but we do have a handful or more each year. And I can assure the board members and members of the public that these steps are taken in a sequential order. And again, it may go a little bit different direction based upon the nature of the threat or what the circumstances are, the age of the children, a number of different things that can come into play. Um, but we do use the similar approach each time. And as you know, the things that we are using are consistent with what uh United States Secret Service and Homeland Security recommend for reduction of targeted violence. So you've got a fairly um comprehensive three-page report here. The point of this is to make sure that we take advantage of this annual requirement uh to talk about the safety protocols that we use. And I understand that when I'm giving a report, I'm being very technical in nature about something that is heart-wrenching to even think that we have to plan for. But the fact is, when we are in this mode, we are in that technical fact-finding mode to make sure that we have covered all of the bases, that we have a solid handle on what we're at. Because at the end of the day, we want uh children to feel safe at school. We want families to have faith and confidence that we are doing the right things to make sure that their students are are safe. And we just all know that we have to talk transparently that these are things we hope never happen here. But the fact is, is that they could. And it's a very small percentage. School is still the safest place statistically for kids to be. So while it's a very unlikely that anything would ever take place here, we have to prepare in the fact that it could. And I take no pleasure. This is very different. I'm starting my thirtieth year in public education this fall. This is very different than year one, just the way that we look at this, and it's the pragmatic part of where we are at. So my job tonight was to share with you that report, to walk through those things. Um, I have asked a number of our school personnel to be here tonight. We have Sam Richardson representing the elementary principals from Greenbelt Park Elementary. Shane Byer, Northfield High School principal, Gabriel Crombie, who is our school resource officer. Dorothy Cohan, who is the administrative assistants in our Buildings and Grounds Department, has done a lot of work with uh our crisis planning. Justin Robley, who is our director of Buildings and Grounds, also happens to be the deputy chief uh for the Fire Department, so he brings that safety angle uh with him as well. And Greg Jellino, our middle school principal, they are all here to support in any kind of dialogue or questions that the board has. So we'd be happy to take any questions. We thank you for uh giving us the opportunity to share this. It's something that we take very seriously. And we want the public to know that. If people ever have a worry about something, we would rather that you report it. Call your building administrator. We would much rather that someone call their buil- building administrator to report something than not. Because I think sometimes people think somebody else will report this. We would rather get three reports than none. Right? In the case of if there's something that we do need to worry about. So if it's the if you see something, say something mode. We have tip four-one-one in this community too that you can also use. But the bottom line is if you have a concern, you are not bothering us. We want to know. And the vast majority of things we determined fairly quickly are actually not uh anything to be worried about, but we would prefer to have every single one of them be that way instead of just having one. So we've got a number of people who can come up to the microphone, and I'm I volunteered to be the traffic agent, so I'll help people come up to the microphone to help us with any questions that folks have.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Start on the side. Hey, you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hillman, for um explaining all the thoughtfulness that the administration puts behind making these decisions. And it's good to know that we don't do any of the um active shooters simulations. But I still do have a question about the drills in general and the duck and cover one specifically. Because um my question is, we're working with kids from like five to nineteen years old. Because my question is, we're working with kids from like five to nineteen years old. And they all come in with different backgrounds and different life experiences and different different sensitivities and emotionality. And so I'm wondering when the whole duck and cover drill is presented to the students and explained to the students, how you minimize the scariness that some students might take on from that? Because I, because I think with so much media attention now on the horrific school shootings that happen, I think kids are pretty keyed into a lot of that. And this makes it very personal for them. So I'd just like to hear how you, the thoughtfulness that you use in talking to the students about what they're about to do.
So I'm going to ask our three principals to come to the microphone and share their perspectives on that. I think we'll have Sam start.
So it's a great question. The youngest students obviously have not experienced these drills to the same extent that the older students will by the time they're in high school have. And so we have the opportunity to help them learn about these drills and help them feel safe through that. So a few different things, we're notifying families ahead of time so that if there are concerns the parents have, that their child may be more sensitive to the drill or may have questions or fears, that we're potentially able to help or answer those ahead of time. The teachers are so skillful at forming relationships with their students. And so often, prior to the drill, different staff members will let me know of students that they are aware, you know, may be concerned about participating in a drill like that. Because we do multiple drills, the duck and cover, the stay-put and the fire drill along with the severe weather. Every time that we do have a drill, we've notified people in advance. And then when we are talking about the drill, we give lots of advanced warning. We don't just spring it upon them. And so talking on the morning announcements that we will be having a safety drill, talking about it as a learning opportunity to know what to do in the event that we need to keep everyone safe. And that's a concept we talk about a lot, want to make sure all of our geckos are safe or bears or stars. And the language that we use, we try and make it very teacher-centered and developmentally appropriate for the students. And then after the drill is done, the teachers do a great job of helping the students, you know, kind of walking them through the process and helping them know what to do and what's expected. After the drill, we then do a debrief where we come back on the announcements. It doesn't just end or have any, you know, kind of loose ends. We tie that back up with letting the students know, you know, what went well with the drill and that it was just practice and that we wanted to make sure everyone was safe and everyone was. And I'm proud of you as students for following your teachers' directions. And then our social emotional learning team, we have school social workers, behavior coach and school psychologists. They're on call and also aware, especially for students that may receive, you know, more support in the area of social emotional learning. They will be kind of on the lookout for anyone that might need more follow-up support and, you know, maybe some reflection or, you know, conversations there. So close connections with families, close connections with the students, and then really trying to make this a practice drill to keep everyone safe. And that makes a lot of sense to the students at the elementary level.
We'll go in order.
I kind of guess that. A lot of what Sam did at the elementary is very similar to what happens at the middle school. But I'll stress that, that where this all begins is actually, I'll start way back in the web orientation. Even when six years come, it's building those strong connections, building that trust. All of our students have to have a trust in at least one adult in our building. And we really work hard to foster that and make sure that happens. So that when we get to these drills and we go over the PA system to really talk about what's going to happen and that we reiterate multiple times that it is a drill, both before, during and after, that students really believe that that's what it is and they really believe us when we say that and that we just want to keep them safe. So we, there's, there's a balancing act. You have to tightrope a little bit. They're getting old enough to really understand. They've seen the media posts and all that, so that it's not foreign to them. So you can't talk too low, but yet you don't want to increase anxiety too much. A couple of things that we do maybe a little bit that we said Sam didn't mention is in continuous improvement. We always debrief. So as a office team, which is administratively, our administrative assistants, our student support office, we gather after the fact, after we've kind of ended the drill, students are back to normal. And then we sit and we say, okay, how did that go? What did you see? What was out there when you walked the building? Because we check. We make sure that students, the doors were locked, that people were following the directions that we want. And so we want that. We want our staff to give us feedback. Hey, what did you see? What did you see from students? Which again goes back to then after the fact of debriefing with our special ed case managers know their students. They know the students that can get real anxious and they talk through it with them both before, during and after to make sure that they're feeling comfortable and they process those things as well. Our student counselors, even if someone's not a special needs person but still struggles with anxiety, they can circle back with them afterwards saying, how are you doing with this? Or hey, give me a heads up. We're going to be doing this tomorrow. We're going to be doing this third hour today. Are you going to be okay? How can I support you? So again, it's all those relationship buildings, all the time we put in the front end to help students to believe that we're here just to keep them safe, and they believe that in turn.
There's always an advantage to going last. It's almost all been said. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm going to say that to kind of reinforce Dr. Hillman's words. We want to build a culture where we expect to be different. Expect to buck the trend of, of a culture that is, questions their safety or questions the people motives around them. Just a quick stat that I was reviewing some data of the day. And ninety-three percent of our students have zero to one referrals to the office for something. Now, the kind of benchmark that lots of schools use is eighty, fifteen, five. Like eighty percent of your students having zero to one? In our system, we have ninety-three percent as zero to one. So I think as you spoke, that really resonates with me that, yep, this place is different and the culture here is different. But it doesn't excuse behavior and sometimes it can still happen. So we want to be ready. So for the high school, I feel like agency is important. It's not something we do to students, we do with students. And so I oftentimes will provide a script for teachers to kind of set the stage for the drill. We also do a follow-up with teachers. I send a Google form out, hey, did the blinds close? Right? Did your door shut? Do all the mechanical things work? And then I think the other part of this is just that our students recognize that they are part of the solution as well as our staff, building relationships and, you know, if you see it, speak it so that we don't end up in a situation where we don't want to be. So all the things people have said is important. And I think making, making things predictable is possible. Knowing that a crisis creates all kinds of chaos, we're trying to minimize that. Having procedures that help people to know how to move about their day in a, when they have this unforeseen example. I think a great example of high school is flex time. It's an hour of our day. If you've been there doing flex, it's a little, not a lot of structure, right? In the true sense, but at the same time, our students recognize they have a role. Staff has a role. We all have played a role in making that a safe place. And we talk about what we do if there's a problem, right? We, we try to help people to recognize that we want to minimize the unpredictability of our day, which these situations oftentimes will create. Thank you.
Is there another question?
Thanks, Claudia. I have a question also on the lockdown stay-put drill. And this is for actually when the, when a lockdown is being used. So under the description, it states the drill can be used to practice for a situation inside the building such as the medical incidences, which is, I think all of those lockdowns this past year were because of medical involved student or staff members issue. But it says it can also be used if there is a threat identified outside of the building, which could be threatening to students, could be catastrophic. So my, my real concern is, do we inform students of the purpose of that lockdown so that they aren't, I guess, inclined to be calling their parents? Because I know that that's happened, even though it's just a, something that's of no threat to any of the students inside of the building. But they're calling their parents and, you know, there's chaos ensues. So do we have a system of informing the students of purpose and making sure that they understand?
I'm going to have Greg talk about this, Jenny, because he's, he had a couple of medical lockdowns this year. And I think he can help you and I think he'd be representative for the question.
Yep. So the two pieces, you're right, the medical piece is the most common one. And we've actually, it's one of those things that continues improvement. When we got into it, that wasn't really the intent when we first started this. But we saw that this is a tool that has really helped us out. And that one's, we are pretty straightforward with students with obviously generalization. If we know it's a medical, we come on the PA and we actually say, we're going to do a stay-put because we have a medical situation. We just need to make sure there's no one in the hallway at this time. And students respond, I get a few in questions, oh, what happened? You know, and we saw the ambulance or we heard the type of thing, which is just fine. And then afterwards, because there is no anxiety with that. They know that, okay, it's just for someone's safety and I'm safe, which is what we impress upon the students. When we say that, you're all safe. We just need to get someone some help. Now, for your other example, something outside the building, and what do we do? I, having been here the longest, actually had one of these. So we had something after school. It's, I believe the only one that I've had to do, that there was something in community. It becomes harder that when you get away from the school. So during the school day, I can tell you that, again, it would be general comments to students saying, hey, there's something that's going on outside our school building at this time. This, our school day can continue. We just at this, at this moment in time, would like to keep people in the classrooms as much as possible. So staff know. Typically, we would send a message to our staff with maybe a little bit more detail so that they are well aware. They know to shut their outside blinds. So if there is something in the area that students aren't gawking or looking at that, or they see the medical personnel showing up. And then it's really a matter of, we are on the phone with Dr. Hillman, with the police officer Crombie, and you're, you're trying to make a determination at that point, how much information should be given out to families, both during and then ultimately after the all-clear happens. So it's, that's one of those, it's case by case. It's, and there's no cookie cutter for that. You kind of have to make a judgment call. Something clearly has to be sent out. But a lot of times, we may not, as a district, even know the extent of our details, at least for a while.
Okay, that's excellent information. And is that the same protocol at the high school and the elementary schools?
Yes, generally speaking, I would say that the high school is an example of the unique layout of our building. Once we, if I have a medical situation in a hallway, it happens, there's lots of hallways. So we might just shut that hallway down and not do an announcement to the whole school to disrupt people. But it might just be the six or seven classrooms. You know, if we reimagine our school, it might look different, but currently we respond to what we have.
And I, and I know the elementary is the same. I've seen elementary scenarios where they were able to consolidate it to just one wing of a building, depending on the layout. And other times where the entire building, you know, needed to have that stay-put for just a little bit. But in terms of what Greg talked about, the outside threat, that would be similar regardless of the building.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one other question regarding the tip 411 that we recommend to the community and parents and to students also. For a while, that was offline. Do you know if that is back running again?
I'm going to ask Officer Crombie, tip 411. Come on up to the microphone. If you, if you don't know, that's okay. We can find out.
I am not entirely sure.
We will find out. My understanding is it had been back online, but we'll just, we'll double check and I can follow up with board members on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ben, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, yeah. Mr. Bear, I'd follow up on a comment that you just made during your previous remarks. And that was just, you talked about how it might look different if we reimagine the high school. And maybe you can kind of provide some thoughts in terms of, based on your experience in the current building. And then, you know, what we may be headed to depending on the referendum this fall. How might that look different from your perspective?
Yeah, you know, depending on the layout of a building, there, there can be, you know, one vantage point. You can see three hallways in some cases. And so, so that, that changes the communication style and the response, because you want to make sure we protect the dignity of people. And so we want to protect privacy, we might shut the whole building down to support that. Conversely, a hallway that can be contained with only three or four people being notified would, you know, lessens the scope of that.
Sure. And maybe just a follow-on question there too. You know, when we think about, you know, access, I think one of the concerns, and I think when we look at the community survey, you know, just recognizing that the safety of students in the building is a top concern. Do you see some advantages or just, I guess, what we've been talking about tonight in terms of drills and response and threat assessment, things like that? Are there changes that you would, as a principal, want to incorporate into a new building design or kind of a reimagined building design?
Well, I think having sightlines that are more predictable give you a more predictable, predictable response, right? So if you think about the current high school layout, it's, it's very difficult to see all aspects of the building. You have to have lots of people and lots of places to, to cover that. Where in a high school that has a more of a rectangular design and a couple of floors, you know, you have a much, much easier time, more predictable sightlines to be able to respond to.
Sure. Okay, thank you. And Dr. Hillman, I had one question that you had talked about in the three-page document that we just looked at. One of the bullet points talked about training for 10th graders and that that didn't happen this last year, that it would happen next year. Will those 10th graders that missed it also be included in the retraining or the training that's scheduled for this coming school year?
I don't have the answer to that today, Dr. Miller. I know that there was a health curriculum change last year, which is why there was the one-year pause. I do not know whether the students who missed it last year would also get that training. I can tell you that the, this year's 10th graders will get that training is what I have understood.
Gotcha. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate looking into that. I mean, I think the comments that we've heard this evening speak to the importance of culture. The physical space is important as well, but, you know, it's, it's all of the principles we've talked about tonight. And it's the, the critical nature of making sure that the students feel like they can communicate with each other. And obviously the staff and the teachers there on site. A good thing to know in terms of, you know, that training. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia. Thank you to the principals. I have a few questions and comments, so I'll pause and make sure I don't go on too long. First off, I want to provide kind of a parent perspective as a parent with students in both the elementary with Sam and then also at the middle school with Greg. One piece on here talks about 24-hour notice or longer. And I think Sam has been really good at giving, I think at times, up to a week notice, which to me, frankly allows for parents to parent and have those conversations with their children before they have the drill. So while I love hearing the support systems in place at the school, we have to remember parents play a role in this too. So I appreciate that heads up that we have because it is a sensitive topic, as Amy alluded to. And not every child or every family is prepared, but I think it gives us an opportunity to have that conversation. And then I would also encourage parents to talk to their kids after the drills to see how it went. Just like you said, Sam, that the staff is doing. So just wanted to key in on that, because Dr. Hillman, as you talk about 30 years ago, your career has changed in the trajectory. But as parents of young kids, this is our first time through this too, so we're all kind of learning together. So it's nice to hear the community effort to address, you know, unfortunate reality that we're dealing with. And then from the middle school level, I just want to touch on the stay-put pieces. So again, communication, I think Greg and the middle school has done well when those places, when those pieces have been used. Because as Jenny, I think, alluded to, you know, you get texts or calls from your kids. I don't thankfully, but I know other parents do. And questions, but get questions. So it's nice to hear directly from the building that this is happening, everything's okay. So just wanted to give kudos on communications from you administrators. Concerning this document, Dr. Hillman, because I know this is an increasingly sticky topic that people have questions about. Will this be available in any form? I don't know if we have something like this currently on our website or will?
Well, it's
Sent down a parent update.
Absolutely, again, yep. I will include it in this week's family update. It is something that is, of course, part of the board packet.
Right.
But you need to know where you're looking for that. So I would be happy to post this and would be happy to include it in a family update.
Right. I reckon many people aren't digging through our school board packet, so. Right. I reckon many people aren't digging through our school board packet. So, uh, I have a couple of questions if I can continue or do you want to? So I just have, uh, two questions, a couple of questions actually concerning a specific training piece. So I love everything I see here. Uh, concerning the youth mental health first aid training. I'm curious if someone can speak to what that encompasses. And then also with regard to the 80% of staff who have been trained, how was that staff selected? Is it people in the classrooms? Is it all staff? Is it custodians and is it everyone? And then will the other 20% be trained? So just looking for, 80 is such, such a high number. It feels like there's a real direction there for that purpose versus some of these others. There was like 40 staff members.
So I will give a few items on this. At a very high level, the youth mental health first aid tries to provide laypeople, you know, people who are not trained psycho- psychological professionals to be able to spot warning signs and be able to connect a person with a pref- a trained professional. So that's the level that I can go into what the training is about, but it's intended to make sure that as many people within the school have the understanding of what are the signs that I should look for? And if I see something, who do I make sure I connect with? To ensure if a student comes to me and talks with me, I know who to make sure that I can make that connection with. So that's the level that I can go to with that. And then the reason Kerry Duba, I had Kerry Duba, who is an instructional coach and systems coach for us. She has been, uh, the primary lead on all of the mo- most of these trainings. And she estimates around 80% because we don't do the youth mental health first aid training every single year. We bring it, have brought it back, what, every two or three years, Greg, probably around that. So it's in a cycle. So every year when we have some people retire and new people come on, not everyone has that training immediately. Uh, it, it, they will get it eventually as we bring it back through the cycle. So her estimate was around 80% of staff have been trained based upon, um, how many people have left and how many few new people have come in and some, and the thing that we don't always know is some people come in and have had the training elsewhere. Right? We just, we don't always keep track of that particular item. We keep track of things like the anti-bullying training because we're required for that kind of training, but Carrie's estimate was around 80%. And that mental health, the youth mental health, right? Even the student is about, how do you pick up on warning signs? To say, oh, that triggers something in me that I have learned about before. How do I make sure I get this person connected with someone who could provide the support they need?
Those are all my questions. Those, once again, thank you to all the administrators and staff who, uh, have such seriousness when approaching this topic for protecting and keeping our students and adults in our building safe. Thank you.
Thanks for your report. Thanks for showing up. Um, I guess I would just kind of echo some of the things that have been said here before is, uh, you know, the whole see something, say something is obviously very important. I like the idea of going to a trusted, uh, adult, but I, I just see, you know, there's such a, whether it's a, uh, maybe a potential attack or a fire alarm or a health emergency. It's just kind of like, with the kid or whatever it is, it's kind of whether it's martial arts or sports or whatever, that you've got that in your mind of what you're doing next. And that trusted adult, going to that trusted adult is, is very good. I would say, you know, um, nine one one, yeah, see something, say something, call nine one one. And I think a lot of people, maybe they're kind of afraid to call nine one one because it's not, maybe it's not an emergency, but I also on the flip side of that, I really don't know much about four one one. So, um, the tip line, I mean, when am I calling four one one? Uh, I'm giving a tip when I probably should be calling, you know, nine one one. So I think it's kind of like, if somebody's really scared, just say, hey, nine one one, tell them what's on your mind or run to your trusted adult. And you know, we'll work on this. So, um, no simple answers, but thank you.
I have a couple of other questions. Um, there, these are easier than the first one. Uh, I was just wondering about the maps that are in place in each classroom. Are they publicly placed like on, on the doors or something? So I'm just thinking about substitute teachers. If some sort of, uh, emergency came up, would the substitute teachers be able to easily find out what they need to do with the classrooms?
And I'd like Justin and Dorothy to also help with this one too, just briefly too, because they do a lot of the work on producing those, uh, maps.
Yep. At the elementary level, you have a map, uh, placed by each door. So where the students line up, um, that right there would be visible to any visitor, uh, substitute teacher, um, or other person who's not normally in that space to be able to see both for severe weather and fire, um, directionality. And then, um, the sub plans typically have, um, as part of that, um, that's where they would be able to see what to do. Um, in some of those, um, significant situations, but you have another.
Well, you just check the boxes for me as well. And, but in addition, just because of the size of a high school, the scale is just bigger. And so, you know, we could have 10 subs in the building in a given day. And so we've, especially now with the, the, uh, crisis go coming onboard and the technology that, uh, necessar- our subs wouldn't necessarily have access to. We've had buddy classrooms that will partner with the sub. So that if we're doing a evacuation, that the buddy classroom person would then take the role for that sub. So they don't feel like they don't have the tools to do the thing. So I mean, that does kind of a new, a new, um, addition to our plan, but just trying to create that community. We want subs to come back. Want them to feel safe, comfortable, uh, and know what to do.
And if I can just have Justin and Dorothy talk, someone's got to produce these maps for the whole district. And so, uh, buildings and grounds department leads that and they can talk a little bit about their process to update maps and things like that as time goes on.
Yeah. So as maps and buildings change, uh, it's the architects design corridors, um, whether they're fire corridors or storm shelter corridors. So we go off the advice and the, how the prints are designed and the buildings are built, um, which dictates the maps and at the, everything gets updated as need be.
Uh, just to add, we do use a consulting firm for these maps. And so they go through, update everything. We send it out to the schools in the fall during, uh, teacher workshop week.
And then who installs them?
Well, I, I just found that all very interesting because I imagine that the maps, someone would just say, oh, the closest exit is this way, but clearly there's more thought that goes into it than that. And also that it might change from year to year. Could you explain that to me?
Yeah, it, it would be, i- if there was substantial changes to the building would be the biggest thing that would dictate it. Um, but certainly, yeah, there's always an audible. Um, you know, you don't run towards smoke, but you know, things like that, but there's always alternates. And that's what the maps for are for is to dictate, you know, right, left. Um, if you see something, you know, it's obviously things would change and have to be, um, conducted as need be, but, um, the maps are there with the best given information for any given situation.
And Dorothy, I was just, how those maps get updated each year?
Yeah. And so mainly we don't, maps aren't changing year to year, uh, that much. But if we add, do any remodeling, we send it off to our consulting firm. They will come out and do a walkthrough just to make sure that they have everything accurate. Um, and then I would say mainly it's just construction, that things are changing that way. Um, we do have our fire marshal walkthrough every three years. And so he reviews all of our maps, uh, evacuation, shelter in place and I think that's.
Yeah. Storm shelter.
Storm shelter. Yep. So he reviews those every three years and recommends any changes.
Is there a map here?
Oh, yep. By every exit.
Um, thankfully there was one in here. That would have been.
Uh, and now I know where to look for it. Um, Dorothy, I just want to welcome you here because I don't think I've ever seen you at one of our meetings. So thank you. Um, good to see you here. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Um, I also have a question about, um, what happens to the students if the parents opt them out of the drills? I mean, do you, do they hide in the principal's office or do they go to their own classroom and?
They could, I guess.
How do they keep the other kids from going, oh, you're weird. You can, don't do the, uh, whatever kids say. I don't know.
And I'm going to imagine it may be different for elementary, high school, middle school as well. But before we go to that one, I'm going to add one thing to your signage. Um, we have what's called an all, all our buildings to go packets. So teachers, like when you have to evacuate, you take a to go packet with you, which has class rosters in it, has important phone numbers in there. It may have. Um, sometimes we put little, um, fruit snacks in there in case you would happen to have to do, uh, a duck and cover and someone's a diabetic. And so they have some sugar. So that there's, that also goes with. So if, obviously we give our notice. If a, if a family chooses to at the middle school that they don't want, uh, their student to participate, which I can say, I don't know if I, I know very few. I couldn't list even how many that was. It's so few. Um, typically what they've done is they, um, either have come and picked up their student. Um, and that's our choice. We don't say to do that. They just opted and felt better for the very reasons you said. They'd rather just come, take the kid to lunch or take their kid out for a little bit and then bring them back. Um, if a student was going to stay, yes, we would have them typically prob- be prior to the drill. Um, just give them a pass. There's passes that happen all the time at the middle school. So no one would think anything of it. We'd get them down to generally the, the student office and conference room to sit in while we, while we actually did the drill. Um, let them know they're not in trouble. This is, uh, we're actually more than okay with this. And, um, they can work on some homework, read a book or whatever while they're there. And then we'd go on the drill. When the drill's done, they just go back with a pass like most students would do if they went to a student support appointment or whatever.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would just be similar. I mean, you know, we have, we have students coming and going all day long, particularly in high school. And so it's just a check in, checkout process is normal and it, it, it doesn't distinguish itself differently. There's no signage that says you're leaving, especially because of the drill. You're just leaving.
Thank you. And I do have one more question, if that's okay. So, and I think this might be more for you, Dr. Hillman, but I'm open to anyone's response. Maybe it's for all of you. But I, I, I think of those, uh, that survey that said we, you know, the students, um, are connected to other, I don't remember, 93% or something were connected to other, uh, adults and they trusted adult. I'm wondering about that 7% or that small percentage that don't respond that they are connected to another adult, um, or and they trust an adult. How do we identify those people and provide them with help? And because those seem to me that they would be the most concerning students. And I think this is also a high school question, probably more than anything, but.
But Jane.
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, I, I, we've done a variety of different things in the past. We've even done reverse surveys where we have a list of, rather than asking the students, we ask the teachers, right? Who do you have a connection with? And then at various times we'd look and see who, who didn't, if there was anybody that wasn't listed, how do we intentionally bring an adult to make sure that there's that connection there? So those things have happened over time, but Shane, what's the current practice?
I mean, I, I think, I think it's, uh, this is, this really, the question fits in our systems conversation. Right? What, it, it's, it's not a, gosh, I'm going to come to work today and do it something different. It's about having predictable systems that catch and notify and recognize those situations. So our MTSS model is a really good place to put this. Right? And inside the MTSS model is people, adults that are in positions of care. So, you know, we look at the data from our surveys, uh, counselors, our social worker. We have problem solving team that meets weekly. Uh, our, our teachers, you know, I have had this training. Um, so they look, you know, they're looking for things that may be unusual and they, they will respond and report those things so we can follow up. And sometimes we have council social workers doing groups with students, grief groups or, or whatever it might be. So I think it's really trying to give students what they need when they need it. And that's really tricky. But we, we also have students at the high school that are old enough to respond. And like, we have a change, bring, bring change to mind club. It's all about mental health awareness and they do lots of positive, uh, things to reach out and help students to recognize and, and know that feeling anxious or unhappy about things is the normal. And we want to help you navigate your life and how to get better at, at, at doing the things that'll help you sort of be centered. Uh, we have students helping students. We have our success center. We have lots of tools that we try to reach out to. And if, and while I have the same concern you have in high school with 1,250, have we connected with every child? Our data would say we haven't. Doesn't mean the pursuit isn't there. And we want to continue to try to feel better every day about doing what you just said, making sure every student is valued, sees value, connected, belonging, all the things are important to us for sure. So we gotta keep getting better at it.
Thank you. Great questions. Anyone else? Ben, do you have any more questions or comments? Anyone else at the table?
I have a few and I think Dr. Hillman can answer those. Thank you so much for stepping up tonight. Um, I wanted to hear about that duck and cover title. Is that something that, um, local public schools chose as the name? Um, or is that something that's the legislators?
It is a long, that is what we have called it for a long time. So I don't believe it was, it's, it is certainly not legislative. It is just what, what the, um, probably even before Greg was here is what it was named. So it is a local name and could be adapted. We've talked about adapting the names for some time. Um, and so that's something we can certainly consider as we move forward as well. We've talked about changing the names of the drills. Um, the stay put seems fine, but we have talked about changing the duck and cover. We don't have a new name for it yet. So I wanted to put in what most people would know it is tonight.
No, and I understand why duck and cover is better than, um, active shooter drills. So I appreciate that. And then I wanted to hear about, I know some drills are, um, required so many times during an academic year. And I wanted to hear about this particular drill. How often is it's, is there a requirement to have it so many times a year?
Yes, there is. It's pulling it up right now. I believe it's five times. Yeah. That's, so it's, they were required to do five fire drills and then five of the duck and cover drills. And that's in the state statute. Five lockdowns. Yes. So they can, they can do a stay put drill and that counts as one. So combination of duck and cover and stay put, five of those total, um, meet the state requirement.
Then I was unclear on, um, the duck and cover. It sounds like districts are required to have some kind of duck and cover drill, five a year. Um, and the discussion around it is also required.
Correct.
Um, and then I wanted to, um, also confirm that down in the description, when you talk about, uh, threat, um, how does a district investigate threats? That 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 a threat is also inclusive of, um, bullying or you could go into.
Absolutely. Yeah. So I, I think well, there's, when we think about a threat, you're thinking about it as a, a threat of violence. Right? So that's what this particular item really is focused on. But if there's any other, so for example, if there is, um, a report of bullying, right? We have another investigative system that works with that. Very similar to what we've described, but it might include some other folks that aren't listed in that, but the process would be similar.
Or two students that are going to be, um, involved in some kind of fight, something.
Sure. Yeah. Anything that we, any in- information that we would get like that, we would use a similar process in, in investigation. Probably less in, in the situation you just described, we likely might not involve law enforcement. Right? Sometimes we might, but when we think about, uh, an act of violence that's been allegedly threatened against the school, that was what I put in, uh, the list. But all of the investigations would be very similar, whether it's a report of bullying, a report of harassment. There are a few different things that depending on the nature of that report, that might go a little bit differently. But in general, those items that we have talked about, most of them are used in all of those circumstances.
All right. Thank you very much. Very helpful. Hey, um, great discussion. Now we're on to item B, the annual fundraising report that director of finance Val Merdestorf will review the fundraising report as required by policy. Seven thirteen student activity accounting.
Hey, Val. Thank you. Um, so included in your packet was the, um, annual report for this year or this past year, I should say. Uh, we are now officially in a new fiscal year, but, um, as you can see, there's a variety, um, of fundraisers that occurred throughout, uh, the last school year. Um, lots of variety begging groceries, uh, and defeat of Jesse James Day's, uh, help is almost always on there, um, as well as the, um, point set of sale that the music, um, department does, uh, in the fall. Had a couple of new ones with FFA this year. So that was an exciting add, uh, for them. Uh, they have a, a student activity going. So again, this is just, um, a summary of the different, this is specific to the student activity fund. Um, and so it's not all encompassing for the whole district, but specific to the student activity fund, uh, which is required as, um, as they changed all of the rules for this. So, um, that's about it. There's just a, a good variety this year, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members, do you have any questions? Okay, Cory?
How much was the cookie dough the volleyball team was selling?
Uh, I triple checked that one because I thought it was crazy. Um, they sold over 1,100 boxes of cookie dough.
That's fantastic.
The, um, it was a tiered profit margin. So the more you sold, the more you got. Um, and so they ended up getting like a 45% profit margin. So it was a great fundraiser for them. Um, so I expect it might catch on.
And for those who can't see, since we're not sharing tonight, it was nearly $12,000.
Yes.
Fundraising. So that's great.
Yep. Hopefully the cookie dough was delicious.
All right. Ben, do you have any questions? Anyone else?
Um, I have a, a question about, uh, Um, I have a, a question about, uh, that volleyball, um, fundraiser. Did they, I imagine they made more than they were hoping to make. How does that work when they, their fundraiser, um, is vastly different than the, the needs that they're wanting to expend for?
Um, so I, I did look at their account and I actually don't know that it was more than they were expecting. Um, because they have to buy the cookie dough upfront and so they bought a certain amount expecting to sell most of it. So I think they had an idea, um, because they did actually spend most of that this year. Um, they did quite a few different, um, activities and expenditures. Um, I think they did a lot of, um, fan participation, trying to get people to come to volleyball games and really kind of build some momentum. Um, like I know my, my daughter wanted to go and they had blue hoops with candy in it and the kids could go out and, you know, hit the volleyball and get a piece of candy or something. So they did a lot of things like that and just, I think, team bonding and building type activities and so. So they did, it appears they did spend most of it, but if they don't, to answer your actual question, um, the, the balance actually carries over year to year. This is a, an account where the, the balances are retained for that activity. And so the money has to be, um, the kind of purpose behind this student activity is raised by the students, used by the students, directed by the students. And so it carries over to the next school year and that team can help decide if there's excess funds, how they want to use those. Um, sometimes they do it intentionally to save up and help support some kind of expensive equipment, uh, that they want the district to purchase and they want to help support that cost. Um, there's a few different reasons, but the balance would stay there if they didn't.
That's terrific.
I, it looks like all of these are high school activities. Is that because the other schools have PTOs or, um, I know they do fundraisers.
Yeah, so the, the student activities are middle school and high school only. Um, the middle school doesn't, um, it's much more, um, there's maybe six of them. And they're more contained where they're doing like the box tops and things like that where it's not really going out and selling something. So it's not treated the same as a fundraiser per se. Um, so yes, it's a little more, um, high school specific just because of the way the activities are set up and the kids are more at that age able to go out and, sell cookie dough and, um, reach out and do those kinds of networking pieces to help support the, the team. So, or the activity.
Thank you.
Anyone else question or comment? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Right, item C is the summary of the superintendent's performance appraisal and I will be sharing my summary. It is, um, a part of the packet tonight. Um, it's a couple of pages and I'm gonna read, um, quite a bit of it. Okay, the superintendent is the sole employee of the Northfield Public School Board of Education. The district's day-to-day operations are delegated to Dr. Hillman and the current board members are tasked to evaluate him on a semi-annual, on a semi-annual and annual basis. The evaluation covers all facets of the superintendent's job responsibilities. Board members provide numeric ratings on a one to five scale and we are asked to provide comments to support those ratings. For forty-one job responsibilities organized around eight major topics and four focus areas. For this review period, five of our seven board members submitted an evaluation. Ratings and comments were provided by the board members, explaining the rationale behind their numerical rating or offering further insight into the evaluation of a particular category. Um, I myself and Anita Ozzy, the executive assistant to our school board and superintendent compiled and summarized the school board members' evaluations and numeric, um, ratings were, the means were calculated. All the written comments were shared with Dr. Hillman, um, verbatim, but were not attributed to any specific board member. And then I met with Dr. Hillman on July second to review that annual evaluation. Dr. Hillman received an excellent evaluation achieving an overall rating of four point nine two out of five point oh. I will highlight one area of the evaluation and share board members' comments in that area. While the academic year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four gave Dr. Hillman many areas to highlight his strengths as an excellent district leader, thoughtful communicator, engaged administrator in the district and in St. Paul, involved community member and terrific educator. One of the biggest goals he had on his plate this year was presenting to the board information regarding the facility's update to the high school, such that the board could cast a vote on their desired path. In this focus area, the superintendent will develop a structure, supply the necessary information and recommend appropriate timelines for the board to decide what bond referendum question or questions should be presented to the voters in November twenty twenty-four to address the substantial facility improvements needed at the Northfield High School. Dr. Hillman scored high ratings from all the board members. The community in partnership with the district has been considering the facility needs at the high school for several years. Dr. Hillman thoughtfully scheduled work sessions where key partners were invited to sit with board members in presenting the needs of the facility from district staff to district student leadership to trusted experts in the field. He used a decision-making instrument called iRod to capture all board members' concerns and questions so that those could be addressed by subject area experts if needed. He scheduled work sessions for us where we could handle the materials saved to a Google folder and we could assess and study those. He developed a timeline of important milestone events that board members needed to consider should they want a referendum vote in November twenty twenty-four. Besides contracting more as Southern to survey voters, scheduling and leading tours, what happened today, at the Northfield High School facility and a tour of a new school out of town, Dr. Hillman gave us updates at regular meetings and helped facilitate that discussion. All board members came to consensus on pursuing an action on the facility and eventually voted on sending a referendum to the community. This focus goal took most of the academic year and was an excellent way to highlight all of Dr. Hillman's strengths in organization, communication, listening, community engagement, advocacy to the board on behalf of the district and high level collaboration with decision-makers at the table. A building is an important puzzle piece in supporting all students' educational needs in Northfield. It is not more important than teacher, parent, student relationships, early intervention and properly trained staff, but it is a real support tool for students and teachers every day. While we do not know how the voters will respond to the upgrades, we as a board rated Dr. Hillman highly in this focus area. Three board members shared the following comments in part in this category. One board member put it succinctly this way, excellent work keeping the board and community informed. Another board member wrote, Dr. Hillman's planning, implementation and dedication to the bond referendum process is truly remarkable. No one does a referendum like Dr. Hillman. Finally, another board m- member submitted in part, Dr. Hillman and his administrative team have demonstrated a key understanding of how to roll out the process with the board and community with regard to the high school. Dr. Hillman took to heart the feedback shared with him. Ultimately, the thorough, open dialogue between and with the board resulted in a successful vote to move to the community for support where we imagine high school. Since March eleventh, Dr. Hillman has worked tirelessly to inform district voters about the issues on the ballot. We couldn't have a better leader in this respect. In conclusion, these comments, along with his overall rating in eight topics and four focus areas, speak to the full confidence the Northfield School Board of Education has for Superintendent Hillman. We as a board, district and a community, continue to appreciate Dr. Hillman's leadership style. He is someone who includes others, has open respectful dialogue with stakeholders and is open to feedback and improvement. As a community, we are in good hands and understand that not every community has the education staff, district personnel and board leadership that make Northfield Public Schools a desirable school district. The school board is grateful for Dr. Hillman's excellent perform. Well done. Board members, if you would like to make additional comments beyond or in addition to what you stated in the evaluation, I'll open the floor to you. Um, you don't have to. I know you can connect with him individually as well.
I just wanna say how fortunate we are to have you as our superintendent at the school district. Uh, I was your first new school board member, starting just a few months after you started your job. And, um, and I feel I've had the opportunity to watch you grow and learn. And you started out as a natural superintendent, but you've only gotten better and better through the years. And it's been really fun to work with you and I, a great education for me too, and to the educational world. Uh, and, and it's very, um, uh, anti-stressful to have you as our leader because I don't feel like I have to worry about many of the other things I hear other school boards worrying about. Because I know you're taking care of things and, and leading us through it really well. And since I have been sort of with you almost all the way, I wanna thank those two board members that were here before me who chose you. Um, the ones who are still here and that would be Noel and Jeff. Thank you both for choosing Dr. Hillman as our superintendent. And, um, I think he has really brought our district a long way in eight years.
Well, those are some nice words and I think the summary speaks largely for itself, but I'll, I'll say this as I was kind of mulling this over the weekend. Uh, in, in a world that is increasingly difficult and selfish, uh, you are a beacon of altruism. And really, we are fortunate to have you and you are the epitome of a servant leader. So thank you for being here and I look forward to many more years of you leading our district. Keep hiring good people too, like those two over there.
Anyone else? You don't have to, and you can connect.
It's Claudia. Uh, Dr. Hillman, I just wanted to also kind of echo a little bit about what Cory and Amy were saying, but didn't, don't want to repeat all of it. I, I've found that you make conversation effortless, which is kind of rare for me anyway, to come across people like that. No matter what the, the topic might be, it might be something extremely sensitive and even something that provokes, um, a lot of feelings and negativity, but, um, you're always welcoming, um, criticism and, and welcoming any ideas. And, um, I, to that, I, I just think that that's rare and I really appreciate it. And then I also just had some, uh, another comment and some questions, if that's okay too. In going through the evaluation, um, I just was kind of curious. So this evaluation has been the same since two thousand and sixteen. And then even went back to the same, similar, um, forms used back to two thousand and three. And so I, I was just kind of concerned that, um, thinking, you know, it might be time for a change of the format. Um, so I, I was a little bit concerned with some of the questions not having, um, I guess detail. Um, just a little bit more, they just seemed kind of more generic and, um, I was looking for a little bit more detail. Um, because I feel that that is, in the details is where we, we can grow, we can improve and learn. And if things are a little bit more, I guess, generalized, I just don't see that it's, um, that someone can, can improve or that we can all, um, help the district improve, um, in that type of format. So I just wanted to mention, um, that concern of mine.
And that's a question for me, then?
Um, no, it's a concern.
I think the way that I've seen this tool used the best is, um, in the general question being rated um, and then the comments provided to offer support for that rating. And then also understanding that it's a tool at the end of a year or at the end of the six months. And that the regular meeting with Dr. Hillman, whether it's monthly or twice a month, um, is that time to hash out how his performance is going. So there shouldn't be any surprises at the end of six months or at the end of a year. Um, in terms of the, the focus areas, I think those are the most specific ones. And then the, um, the other job, um, items, the forty-one items, worded more broadly because they are being, um, they are addressing those aspects of the job. Is he managing finance? Is he involved with other districts? And so it wouldn't, those questions wouldn't be specific to, did you meet with so-and-so how many, so many times this year? But did you meet with other superintendents? Um, having said that, I'm not, um, opposed to seeing this border, um, depending on how things go for me, a future board, um, organized around looking at updating the evaluation tool. But as far as I've seen it used in my short time, I think it's been effective in considering what the superintendent is doing and rating him based on those, um, you know, bigger items. Is he working in finance? Is he connecting with the community? And then rating him on the specific, um, focus, goals, focus.
Thanks for the information. I just think it would be great to be able to evaluate on those more specific items.
And certainly continue to have that discussion. Right, um, so Ben wanted to speak?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, uh, Dr. Hillman, thank you. Yeah, I think that's a, a review very reflective of your good work over the last year. And I, I would add appreciation to you and Val and, yeah, I think the administrative team that you have in place, especially in the area of, you're just keeping track of and emphasizing the importance of the financial health of the district. And I think there are fourteen percent fund balance goal is an important one. You know, I know that's not always been where the district's been in years past and, you know, that's a key, at least, performance indicator for me in terms of things that we need to look at from a district perspective, but I know you're very attentive to it along that, with Val. Thank you for that. And then I would say, um, Cherry Gonzalez, George, thank you too for taking the time. I know it, it takes a lot of time to kind of pull that together, go through that. I guess personally, I find the review to be, as you mentioned, you know, fairly detailed in terms of looking at, what is it, forty-some plus elements? And I think, you know, if there's opportunity to provide feedback, I think in each one of the sections that applies to many of those jobs, the requirements laid out in the job description. So, you know, I think as board members, we have ample opportunity to weigh in on some pretty specific points in mass performance overall. So just speaking from experience, you have somebody that's probably supervised over fifty people in his career, you know, I find it to be a good, uh, tool and, you know, one I could certainly work with to provide that kind of feedback. So thank you, Claudia, for pulling that together. Like I said, I know it takes time and, and for presenting it up this evening.
Right, and then Jeff, if you want to make a comment about the tool, I'll welcome that if you have.
Um, no, I just, I mean, that could be visited at a later date.
Oh, great. And then if you have comments for Dr. Hillman, you're welcome to connect with him outside of the meeting.
You, I just had a general comment. It's just very short. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for your years of service at the school board here and also your report was very good and very well-written.
All right, we're on to item D, the fall twenty twenty-four bond referendum. And Dr. Hillman will, um, update the board on the informational campaign and highlight some of the events.
Yes, so, uh, we just continue forward, making sure that the public has access to the information that they need uh, to be able to make an informed decision. As early as September twentieth, uh, we, I had a need to do a count this afternoon. This afternoon, we did have a tour. We had a couple of people on that tour. Over the last month, I would say this was our lowest attended tour with, uh, three people. And then we've had as many as nine or eleven. You know, it's been pretty typical, seven, eight, nine people on the tours. Um, good questions, good engagement. So they've been a really useful tool, but we've had forty-nine events so far. That would be either tours or presentations, tabling events that I've described before, or providing leaflets. So for example, the Books and Stars program, um, that happens in the summer when, uh, the folks who participate complete a survey. They also get, uh, a card that gives them some information about the referendum. So those are the kinds of events that we've been doing. Um, again, tour today, um, we also have a signage plan that we are starting to execute this week. So, um, we have banners that are going to be placed on buildings. We have window clings that will be on entries to doors. Um, all of them have a QR code that you can go directly to the school website. So again, just making sure that there's no stone unturned, that voters have an opportunity to make sure that they know that there's, uh, gonna be questions on the ballot for the school this fall, how to get additional information. And so we're starting that process this week. Um, the first, I wouldn't be shocked if the first, uh, items go up Wednesday or Thursday. So they are all in. We reviewed them today and, uh, we're moving ahead with getting those, uh, publisher, uh, hung, excuse me. Um, we have a couple of town, township hall presentations this week. And this was feedback from board members asking to see what are groups that we have not gone to in the past to make sure we can give a direct presentation and. To make sure we can give a direct presentation and questions. So we did do that intergovernmental township board meeting about a month or so ago. And then this week, tomorrow night, we are at the Castle Rock Township meeting and Wednesday night at the Bridgewater Township Hall. So I'm just making, just thinking it's, it is Wednesday night. So we have um, Castle Rock and Bridgewater Township this week. Upcoming, we have Greenville Township, and those are the ones that we have scheduled uh, so far. Also, if you're going to be downtown for Crazy Days, uh, we'll have a booth at the Crazy Days event on uh, the twenty-fifth. And so that will be typical, we'll be doing um, the thank a teacher where we ask people to write a thank you note to any teacher that they had in the district. And we facilitate mailing those out. That's what we do every year. And then this year, we'll also have some information about the bond referendum and our spinning wheel at the table. We have a new Plinko thing that we think is going to draw people in to get them interested. So uh, we'll have those things going. Um, and then additional tours, I think Anita and I just scheduled a dozen. Another ten, ten or so, by another ten tours between now and Election Day. And so the event schedule is now listed, it's up and updated as of today. And so again, I do think the most important thing is encourage people to come on a tour. You know, I think people are going to be best served if they have had the ability to see the building for themselves. Um, we do have that drone footage that we'll be starting to use. We're starting to use that in presentations, but we'll also be starting to share some of that um, in other formats as well. So those are the kinds of things that we have going right now. Um, I did speak with uh, Sal Bagley the other day about our review and comment submission. And she had validated, so we are ahead of the game because the Department of Ed was still doing a review and comment for the August election date. You could run a bond referendum um, in August and they were still finishing up the review and comments for those items that are on the August ballot. We were assured we're the first in the queue uh, for the November election. So we anticipate getting a positive uh, review and comment back, but that's where we are at with that. And again, we just continue to make sure that people have the information that they need to make an informed decision. In democracy, a decision will be made and we'll work with it whichever way it comes out. But we're making sure that people have the information they need to make an informed decision. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have about the informational campaign.
And thank you. Any questions?
So my question is how you're getting the word out about your tours and other things? Because I, I think it's great you had three people show up, but I think that there's an opportunity there to have more show up. And as many people as we can get to come and actually see the high school, I think that makes a huge difference on their perspective about the bond referendum. Um, so along those lines, um, I would suggest using more paper. Um, so at Crazy Days, have a handout. I mean, maybe you were planning on doing that.
Yep.
Um, at the, at the various township meetings, have handouts. I don't know if we can uh, can do another mailing that would have the actual events listed? Because I think while it's great, we have the QR code and there's a lot of information on that website, for some people, that's a barrier. Um, so if they can take a piece of paper and have it in their hands and, you know, that'll be a reminder that they, oh yeah, I want to go do this. Um, so this is just general encouragement.
So we do plan to do at least two more, um, at least two more pieces of direct mail. You know, one would, will likely be a postcard. And then we typically, the only piece of direct mail we did for a long time was the bond referendum guide. We're just getting started thinking about that, but that traditional bond referendum guide gets mailed to people in August. We'll need some help putting that together, so we'll, we'll, we have all the content, we just need to get that designed. So there'll be at least two pieces of direct mail, and that's in response to the feedback that we have heard at public meetings about um, folks who don't, aren't able to engage in a variety of other ways. So it's our, you know, our unofficial mantra of no stone left unturned. So we've already done two pieces of direct mailing, if you go all the way back, you know, to before the board even voted to move ahead. We had done some direct mailings there. Well, I said, we'll do at least two more. Probably one, I would say by the end of July, and then another one probably toward the end of August, maybe even the first week in September.
Have you thought about putting them on the Northfield calendar or doing some, you know, at least the bigger events? Um, and, because I think more and more people are looking at that and.
Yeah, I, I, I'm happy you said that because as you know, we have had an issue with that calendar because you brought it to me that, you know, that calendar pulls in our athletic contests. But in some kind of back software challenge, it shows the wrong time um, on the community calendar. On our website, it's correct. It just must be the way that the software and we've, the city has attempted to look at it several times. But if we give it to them directly and they input it directly, then I'm, with the tours, I'm concerned. I think most people, when most people see there's a wrestling match at noon on a Tuesday, they say, that can't be right, right? And they look and they say, oh, okay, it's actually at seven o'clock. But if they input them, I confident that they would be correct. I just don't want people to show up at a time when we're not there. So we could absolutely use the community calendar. We've been using uh, KYM and radio quite a bit. The newspaper from time to time has put uh, the, the um, tours in, uh, so we've continued to share it. Um, I think another place is we have not done a social media post in a while with the upcoming tour events. And now that we've re, you know, scheduled an additional number of them, we can add that there as well. So we'll have a parent update going out this week that will include it. And this today, we've been attempting a variety of different times. So the two typical times we have are nine to eleven or ten to noon. If we do a Saturday, we typically do a nine to eleven or a ten to noon. That's depending on my schedule. If I have to get something into the, we put it that way. And then most of the time uh, in the afternoon, the four to six time slot has seemed to work fairly well. Today, we tried a three to five. I think that, you know, was, we figured if we could get it out well enough ahead of time. Um, and it also is just after the July fourth week, so it's possible that that also impacted it as well. But I appreciate the ideas and we'll execute them.
Thank you.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, Cory?
This is a referendum adjacent question. I'm curious if you had any input on the Storybook Theater play selection at the middle school this week?
I did not.
They're doing uh, Goldilocks and Three Bears.
I had, I, this is the first that I've heard of this, but that if I, I wish I would have been that ahead of the game, but that, I don't think they're going to listen to me about Storybook Theater and the selection. So I did not, just good luck, I guess.
Appreciate that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Sorry, Ben, did you want to, okay? Okay, we're on to item six, which is the consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull for the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, Amy? Okay. Benny, thank you. Anita, will you facilitate a roll call?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seven is our items for individual action. We have five items for individual action. They will all be roll call votes. There are two resolutions. The first is our policy committee recommendation. I'll take a motion first and then we can have a discussion. Is there a motion to approve policies five oh seven point five and eight oh six as presented for first reading on the June tenth uh, regular board meeting?
The move.
Move by Cory. Second?
Second.
Second by Ben, thank you. Are there any questions or comments or any updates for us?
Uh, the only update I would have is the la, the question the last time was, there was a list of uh, responsibilities that um, this policy required to be part of any school resource or officer contract. And we did, there, the question was, were those um, part of statute? And they, we did determine they are part of the new legislation. So those, that list of required items that are intended to be in the school resource officer contract, those did come directly from statute.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Amy?
I'm apologetic if I asked this last time, but I don't remember the answer. Um, do you know, was this policy discussed with the um, Northfield Police Department or um, with, with our current SSO? Especially regarding the training that's required, but all of it in general?
Yes, I've shared the policy with the city administrator, Ben Martig, and chief of police, Mark Elliott.
And did they have any comments on it?
I, I don't think they had it. They did not have comments nor concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben, any questions or comments? Okay. All right, then we will go to a vote. Um, and Anita, will you facilitate that?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next is our fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit engagement letter. The engagement letter establishes the parameters and fees associated with the annual audit required by statute. Um, I will take a motion first and then we can discuss. I will uh, move that we accept the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four engagement letter from Clifton Larson Allen LLP in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred dollars implemented by the implementation of the new risk auditing standards, NOTRIC C twenty-five hundred. Uniform Grant Guidance Compliance Audit of Federal Program Expenditures in the amount of forty-two hundred per audited federal program and expenses, including travel, internal and administrative charges, and a technology client supportive fee of five percent. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Okay, move by Cory. Any questions on this item, questions or comments?
Can you repeat the motion, please? I'm joking.
I, I have a comment, but it's not on this, but are we going to go back to the second policy after this?
Oh, I apologize. Um, did you have questions on that other?
I, I did, but we can do this first and go just go back.
Apologize for that, yes. Um, any other questions or comments on this item? Ben, none? All right, Anita, will you help with that?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, board members, I apologize for going through that um, first item too quickly. On policy eight oh six, any questions or comments?
Did we, did we already approve both of them? I mean, I, I, if we did, that's okay. I just was, I was thinking we were doing them one at a time.
Um, I uh, they are both together, five oh seven point five and eight oh six. Approving them together.
Okay, then I'm fine. I don't need to go back.
Okay, next is our resolution designation of identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertify, re-certification system. Um, this is a, a resolution that we um, take every year to um, appoint a uh, local education. Um, I'm sorry, that authorizes Dr. Hillman to act as the identified official with authority. And Kristin Nesset to act as the Iowa to add and remove names only for the Northfield Public Schools District zero six five nine. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this resolution? And it is printed in your memorandum and a part of the board pocket. Any discussion, any questions or comments?
Just, this is an annual resolution required to take by MDE. It's the same resolution every year regardless of the personnel change.
Okay, right, Anita?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes, thank you. Or the resolution passes. Okay, we're on to item D, which is the resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. The board is asked to approve the resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. School board member Noel Stratton has provided notification of his inability to serve as a member of the school board and attend meetings due to illness effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas pursuing a Minnesota statute one twenty-three B dot O nine subdivision four, a vacancy caused by a member being unable to serve on such the school board and attend its meetings for not less than ninety days because of illness or prolonged absence from the district may, after the school board has by resolution declared such vacancy to exist, be filled by the board at any regular or special meeting thereof for the remainder of the unexpired term or until such ill or absent member is again able to resume duties as a member of the school board, whichever date is earliest. We will move to approve the resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence effective July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, move by Jenny. Second?
Second.
Come back Cory. Any discussion on the resolution to declare a vacancy? This is discussion on the resolution declaring the vacancy.
Can I just make a couple of comments? Is that okay? Just as, so I just want to share that um, you know, Noel is a beloved treasure in this community. And he's served on the board con, uh, consistently, continuously since nineteen eighty. And according to MSBA, he is the, currently the longest um, serving school board member in Minnesota. And so I just, we all hope that Noel recovers. Uh, we all know him and appreciate him and he's, both he and Lois are just treasures in this community. So we are really sad to see this happen, um, but we also want Noel to take the time that he needs to get better. I did talk with him briefly on Saturday night and um, you know, he is home and he's recovering. So just I ask the whole community to keep Noel and of course Lois in our hearts. Um, and he just has always been steadfast in his commitment to making Northfield a better place. So I really regret that you have to take this action, but I know it's what Noel feels is best at this time.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Jeff, question or comment?
Um, so that's understandable. So this is almost like uh, second verse, same as the first in a sense. I assume we're going to follow the same process that we did last time.
That's the second item here we can talk about. We, we did add another option for the board to consider.
And we can get to that here momentarily. So right now, we're um, going to consider uh, questions or comments on this resolution to declare a vacancy. Have a question or comment on that?
Yeah, this, you see, he has, so he did, so if you looked at it this way, I mean, he would have had the opportunity to just resign.
Yeah, so that there, in a, in a situation like this, people have really two options. There is the temporary vacancy. Um, and so with a temporary vacancy, the difference is that this person can come back should they feel better, right? So if, under that part of statute, I resign temporarily, and then if I feel better, when I feel better, I am able to come back to my board position simply by the board taking, submitting a letter and the board taking another action. In that case, when the board appoints a temporary replacement, that person can be seated immediately. With the traditional resignation, which is typically when someone moves out of the district or there might be a reason that they want to resign. The, the board has to wait thirty days before that person, they can appoint an individual, but you wait thirty days. There's actually a, a method where people in the community could submit, I think it's, if I'm right, it's five percent of the electorate submits a um, a petition to reconsider it. So the difference between a temporary resignation would be, in this case, Noel doesn't feel that he can pursue his duties for ninety days. It allows the board to seat someone immediately, should the, if, as you do that. And then it does give the person the option to come back should they feel better. You resign, you resign, and then it's a similar process, except you have to wait thirty days to officially seat the board member. Uh, we did, again, even though we had done this within the last couple of years, Anita and I had a conference call with Greg Abbott from MSBA just to walk through the statute, make sure we were understanding of the options that were available.
I'll set the brush up on that statute a little bit, but I mean, if, if it's within six months of an election cycle, that's a different case in a sense. And I would, I would add also that it would be at the discretion of the board, I would think, if you wanted to just stay at a six-person board? Or does it have an automatic?
Great question. So we talked with MSBA about this and so the new, there's a change in statute and I'm going to look at three months. So if the, if the resignation occurs within three months of the end of the term, then the board would not have to, to do that, right? So it's, it's, that was changed now. So three months, that just was approved this past.
From six to three?
Well, I, I'm not even sure. I actually think, you actually had to run the, if, if it was three months away, I think it's actually the other way around. That there's a difference with the election, so let's, i, i, if the election were further off, if the end of the term were further off, then you would have the election, um, you, you could, you'd have a special election because the term is ending technically in January, right? But this is the last year of the term, that changes it a bit. So this was, if you had a resignation, you know, two months before the end of term, technically before you would have needed to have filled that, right? So a little bit of a different part. So is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just, other than protocol, I mean, I think, and I've been through this a couple of other times since I've been on the board. So I think what we did the last time was exactly the proper thing to do. And I think anything else, just kind of, it's kind of more discriminating and, and could potentially um, not follow. Yeah, that's fine, but we'll just see how, um, and, and so, go ahead.
Well, and I, there was one other question, but I don't, we, we did talk with Greg Abbott about would we have the option to not fill it? And when Greg looks at this, he says, no, you're gonna, you will have to fill this um, because of the amount of time remaining uh, in the term. So we did ask, did we have the option just to let it, let it roll, and it does not appear that we have that option. And it does not appear that we have that option.
Right, and just to mention that, I mean, I'm open for all people that would want to put their name in for temporary or permanent to be, have an opportunity to have this temporary seat.
So Jeff, we can discuss that in the next item. This item is just on the, a resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. So we are going to, we have a, a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussions on the resolution?
So we're acknowledging this, this resolution.
We have to first declare a vacancy before we can move on. Anybody else have questions or comments? Yeah, Amy?
Just a quick comment. I just love the hope that's part of this, that Noel is such an important part of this board and certainly knows a lot of the history of the board from serving on it for 44 years. And so I appreciate his ability to be able to come back with this approach because we are all sending good vibrations away for recovery.
Anyone else, questions or comments on the resolution? Okay, Anita, we facilitate a roll call vote.
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Okay, so resolution passes, and so we have a declared vacancy. Next item is a plan for the school board vacancy appointment. The board is asked to determine the direction for appointing an eligible district resident to fill the vacancy created by Noel Stratton's temporary resignation. Considering that this appointed board member would attend a maximum of nine regular school meetings, the options for the board's deliberation are listed in this document, in this memorandum. The board is asked to approve one of the listed options tonight. I will open the floor for a brief discussion, then propose a motion for us to vote on regarding the method we should use to fill Noel Stratton's vacancy. We asked board members to email Dr. Hellman and myself with this, with their initial recommendation on the path we should take. We did hear from three of the five members. And so now I would like to hear if there are any further clarifications or considerations anyone here tonight would like to make regarding the method for filling the vacancy. The options before us, I will call on you. The options before us are, option one, to appoint a former board member to fill the vacancy created by Noel's temporary resignation. In this option, the board would direct the chair to recommend a former board member who has served as recently as 2020 to fill that vacancy. That would be somebody who served on the board since 2020 until present time. Should there be no interested former board member, the chair would ask the district to open applications for community members to apply. Those applications would then open July 15th to give me time to communicate with former board members. Option two is to accept applications from eligible residents. Applications would open July 10th this week and be accepted through August 5th at 4:00 p.m. Applicants can address the board at the August 12th regular board meeting. The board would be expected to appoint an eligible district resident to fill that vacancy on August 12th. Okay, are there any questions or comments, clarifications or considerations regarding either of the two options? Okay, Amy?
First, I just want to make a general statement that I think if, however we fill this vacancy, it would be good to add a stipulation that that person not run for election in November. Whoever is chosen, because I think it would give them an unfair advantage to actually be already on the board. So I just want to throw that out there. The second thing I wanted to say is I do think there's an advantage to option one with a former board member, because those people already know a lot about how the board works and they understand a lot of the terminology we use. And they, you know, they would already have a head start because if you're only going to be on the board for a few meetings, nine at the most, but hopefully Noel will come back earlier. It would be nice to have someone who's already trained in. And plus, those are already board members who are off the board and have chosen to be off the board. And so they would be likely to want just a temporary position and not a longer position. So I'm leaning toward that. I'm not opposed to option two, but I'm leaning toward option one because I think we'd get an experienced person on the board just for those few short meetings.
Good, thank you. Anyone else comments or questions?
Well, I would say that, you know, whether or not, I mean, we've done this a number of times before and it's like, you can ask people whether or not they want to run the school board or not, but it's not for me to decide or you to decide if they get to the last day and they decide to run. So I mean, you could also make the stipulation, I've, when we've done this before, a long time ago, and you just ask the people, do you plan on running again? So, I mean, if it came to that and you're going to put a stipulation onto that, because you are giving somebody kind of a little bit of a tailwind if they're on the board and they're going to run again on the board. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of what you're saying, but I, I would be more in favor if I could, you know, to say that, that if you pointed somebody that is somebody that's not going to run in 2024. But otherwise, I mean, I am 100% for doing it the way we've always done that because, I mean, I would say all potential temporary and or 2024 candidates should have the opportunity to file an application to run for the school board on a, on a temporary or, you know, permanent basis. And I just think that, I mean, I encourage people right now and hopefully that have an opportunity to call the district office and put in an application. And I think that it also opens up more people to maybe take a run at public office and look at it and see what's going on, whether they're the temporary, they want to try it. So I just think that that's more of a, you know, we're publicly elected officials and whether it's a temporary assignment or whether it's a permanent assignment, we should really go to the, the public for that. And you, you know, basically the way it turns out the other time, you bring that in and then you have, I nominate whoever and you have a motion and then you vote. I mean, on a, on a six, six people sitting here, you need, you need four. If you don't get four, you don't put that person in. So, you know, in, I don't know, I shouldn't say it this way. So, I mean, the potential of it turning one way or the other, whether a process you, you make, might be the same anyway. So, I don't know. I'm going to be, you know, well, depending upon what we have for a different motion here. That's kind of a position.
Thank you, Jeff. And could you live with seeing a former board member before you at the next meeting to vote on?
Well, I think it's a, it's a high bias if they're running for, you know, in 2024, to put a temporary seat for somebody right away on the board and not go to the public for that temporary opportunity to put their name in the hat and then everybody vote on it. I just think it's, it's not transparent at all and it's not democratic and it's discriminating, to be honest with you. That's what I think. So, I mean, however it turns, I just want the most fair thing to be, you know, that it is. And if you, whatever candidate you're thinking, if they follow that process and they go through and they get the votes that they need after the application process or not, you know, more power to them. If they don't, they don't, but at least you'd had the, the fair process, in my mind, that's.
Yeah, and to be clear, the option is a former board member who's not running in this upcoming election. That's option one, and then option two would be open to the community members who are not running for the upcoming election.
That is right in there on option one, that's somebody that's not running.
Correct, it would be a former board member and we would.
Well, I mean, I.
The same requirement on that they not run.
I mean, I would still go for the process of, that I suggested to begin with, but that's, I mean, that's kind of understandable, but it's still not the right way to do it in my mind. So, you know, I don't. But I think that based on that thing, then which one would I be voting for? Because if I'm not, I'm not for the.
Okay, yeah, so option one is the former board member and then option two would be to open the applications.
Okay, so I would be voting for option two in that case when it comes about.
Yeah, we.
Based on, based on what I'm thinking, okay.
Okay, any other comments, clarifications, concerns? Cory?
For a lot of the reasons that Amy shared, I prefer option one and I think it makes sense given the maximum length of time this person would serve and because they have an expected history with serving in this community and the likelihood that Noel might come back, I shouldn't say likelihood, but possibility that Noel could come back. So just for clarity's sake, the 2020, someone who served 2020, 2021, 22, 23, those are the people we're talking about. Can you clarify who those potential former board members are? And then maybe that could help shed some light for both the board and the public. Do you have that list available?
Yeah, we had those, so I'm going to look at it and need to make sure she crosses them off. We went back through and looked at, and one of the reasons we suggested 2020 in this option is that going back to 2018, that actually doesn't change too much of it. So our count is that it would be Julie Pritchard, Ellen Iverson, Rob Hardy, Tom Broniak, and then the board appointed Robert Coleman. So under that piece, you know, he would be one of the five. But those would be the five people, four of them who had been elected by the public at one point, one who the board had appointed, who have served since 2020. Did I get them all right? I think I did.
Based on my math, that sounds right. But I wanted to make sure it was coming from you and not me. So based on hearing those five names and my trust in those five people's ability and my trust in you, Claudia, to move ahead with option one with this process and present the board an option, I would, I am voting for option one. And then, of course, there is a contingency that if none of those former board members are interested, then we could go to option two. So this is, to me, not, while it's important, is not something that should be belabored. We should just move ahead. My humble opinion.
Point of verification, so that is assuming that all five of those on there, that, that they're not running for school board in 2024.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else, questions, clarification? Okay, Jenny?
Thank you, Claudia. I just have a couple of comments. So the, I, I did a comparison, kind of a side by side of option one and two, and it looks like they both have similar timelines. So it, one is not going to be dramatically quicker to fill the seat than the other, correct? Because we're going to be voting and who will fill the seat August 12th with both option one and option two? Is that correct?
The, the candidate will be seated by vote August 12th.
August 12th, okay. So the timeline is basically the exact same for both. So there's, option one provides no quicker method to fill the seat. And then also, I noticed, I, I did really appreciate the, the factor in option one. Having a former board, board member would just have the knowledge and especially about the procedures. I know it took me a very long time and I'm still learning the procedures. So I, I really liked and appreciated that. However, former board members would also be able to apply in option two. In fact, all five of those board members could apply for the seat in option two. And I, I think that the, a couple of the, the biggest reasons I'm leaning more toward option two is, one, that the last two board member vacancies that we had in January of 2016 and then December of 2022, we utilized that option two type of method. And I think the results were, everyone was very pleased with the results. And I also really appreciated taking a look into the January 2016 vacancy when there was a subcommittee formed. I think that just shows the public that our district is very serious about this, filling the seat, and we're not just going to take what we feel is the quickest method or the method that we feel on a personal level is the best. We're going to, we're going to take our personal feelings, put them aside, which is what we should do as, as Jeff was saying, public elected officials, and allow and open up the opportunity, because I think it's all about opportunity. We're get, we talk a lot about transparency and involving the community here, both in this room, and I know Dr. Hellman really professes that a lot, transparency and being open with the community. And I think that that would just prove that point, that we are transparent, we are open. And so those reasons are why I would be voting for option two.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I can share. I know I sent Dr. Hellman and you, Claudia, the email regarding my preference, I think, for starting with option one and going to option two. And I think to address kind of the question of sort of community involvement, I think what draws me to option one is the fact that all former board members have been elected by the community. So versus option two, you may have somebody kind of putting their name forth that hasn't been and just given kind of the compressed timeframe. We're in, Jenny, your points well made. You end up in the same place with the August 12th placement of that person filling that vacancy. But it cuts down significantly on the amount of logistics that needs to happen between now and then for, you know, what's effectively at most a nine-meeting term that somebody would serve. So I guess it's, it kind of covers all those bases from my perspective. I think the other component would be just in looking at and kind of echoing what Amy started by saying. It's like, we would want somebody that is not going to run for school board in 2024. So I think making sure that that's clear either under option one or option two, because I'm not sure that the language really shows up in that way as I read it in the board packet this evening. And I guess I'd want that clarification made in whatever language we're going to vote on this evening. But my preference would be start kind of option one and if we're not able to find a former board member, then, you know, move to the option two approach, which, you know, I think is, is fine as well, but just a little less efficient given that we're at a short timeframe that we're on for the remainder of the term that we're talking about here.
Thank you, Ben.
I actually think this has been a really interesting discussion and it has raised a couple additional questions I have, looking at the schedule for both options. So if we did option one and no one was interested in it and we opened up the spot, how would we get the word out to everybody quickly? Because we've now cut down the amount of time that we have for people to consider applying for the temporary position. So that would be my, my first question that I'd like clarification on. And my second question was, I thought I remembered something about there being a difference, sort of a one-meeting difference, like with option one, we'd be able to appoint the person at the beginning of the meeting, but at option two, it would have to be at the end of the meeting. And I, I don't, I want to make sure I'm remembering that right. So there is one small advantage, if that's my memory is right, that we'd actually have option one person at the beginning of a meeting so that they would have an additional meeting. Tell me if that's right or wrong, and those are my questions.
Right.
Yeah, so I did, the difference, you're right, it's a, the difference if you started with option one and there was not a interested former board member, so we open on July 15th. That's roughly the same amount of time as we did back in 2022. So how would we get the word out? We would use the normal way that we get the word out. We would use the Northfield News, we would use KYM and radio, we would use our social media, and we would use direct email to families. We would not have time to do direct email or direct mail to all constituents, just that you just can't do it, it wouldn't be able to get. We'd be done with the time period by the time it probably got delivered. So it just, it's an effort to get that done. So though, we would use the same process that we have used before and we know we can get the information and the word out quickly. The last time, I believe we had six or seven, you know, qualified candidates. And if you think about that, you know, that was in December when we actually posted, around a very busy time of the year. So I feel confident whether we post it this week, you know, or on the 15th, you know, that we would get quality candidates. And I'd also point out, option two is also, let's say that the board did choose option one and a candidate was presented to the board and you did not vote to approve that person. We could still then execute option two, just albeit on a different timeline. So just, that was the only piece I hadn't heard yet in the discussion when we were researching these options for you. I just want to point that piece out as well. So then the beginning and the end, I think that's totally up to how we set the agenda. My, my sense would be that in the past, the last couple of, at least the last time we did, I know for sure, we made the appointment at the end of the meeting, the last action item, so that that new board member who was seated immediately didn't have to do any preparation. We also had a number of candidates, so that wasn't feasible. We can choose to put it wherever you want in the process. So you could put it at the beginning of the meeting, you could also follow the same process and put it at the end of the meeting. So even that experienced former board member wouldn't, you know, we don't know who the recommendation is going to be, but it would be one person recommended versus a suite of six or seven folks. So, you know, we could, maybe even more, but we could bring forward, we could give that one recommended person, you know, some of the information ahead of time. And so they could begin right at the way, at the, at the beginning of that. We could make it happen at the beginning of the meeting, should that be what the board desires.
Other question? Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? Cory?
Just a couple of comments to follow up some of the. Just a couple of comments, follow up some of the other points made. Uh, so again, just to draw the, uh, to me, the most obvious contrast between this process or this discussion versus twenty twenty-three and twenty sixteen is the length of time of potential service. Both those cases, I believe, would have been well over a year, and the most recent one would have been up to two years, close to two years. And I believe the prior one in twenty sixteen was more than a year. So we're talking about a length of five months here. And as Jenny and others have said, having someone come on board who's been familiar with this position, I think, makes a lot of sense. Plus Noel, I think, can come back within ninety days. So do we want to go through the process and have people apply and deal with this, you know, that whole process on their end? And then be, thanks for being here. After four meetings, they're gone. So I think someone coming in from the board perspective with the prior experience, that would make sense. I also want to just illuminate this process a little bit because I get a little concerned when people talk about transparency. This is as transparent as you can be. We're having a public discussion in front of cameras, in front of at least two people, uh, about this process. And Chair Gonzalez George invited all board members to provide input on this last week, between Dr. Hellman and Claudia, putting this together to come with options. So there could have been input provided by all board members to come with maybe a third option or have some input on a second option, the first option. So I just invite people to participate in those conversations. So when we come to this board to do our business, we are prepared to do our business and that we are talking openly and transparency, because that, and transparent, because that's what we are doing right now. Uh, so that said, I will still stick with option one. I think it's the one that makes sense this time. Uh, I am not opposed to option two, and option two is still on the table should any of those five former board members not be interested in helping out this district at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else comment or a question? And then for my part, I wouldn't bring you two options when we have a perfectly great, um, system for appointing someone to a vacancy. I wouldn't, you know, go to this, um, have this discussion or bring this option or, you know, waste Dr. Hellman's time, um, sorting through, um, option one. But I felt, and it sounds like, um, some of you also feel strongly enough about the limited time they're gonna serve, the learning curve, the fact that these would be individuals coming in, um, hit the ground running, and they were, um, formally elected by our very community members. So I feel like those are very strong points. So that is why I chose to, um, offer you two options instead of just going with our, um, our typical system. My thinking behind that. So at this point, if there are no more questions or comments, then what I'm gonna do is, um, put forward a motion for someone to second, and then we will have, um, a need to facilitate a roll call. Did you want to put that motion, Amy? Oh, sure, go ahead.
So I have a quick comment. I was just trying to think of the, a fair way to order the people, um, and, who, in the order that you might ask them.
Oh, sure.
And, um, if we went with, with option one, and it seems to me that would be, you mentioned that they had already been voted on by our community, which I think is a very strong point. And some of them had been reelected numerous times. So I would actually start with the most experienced, you know, years on the board. And I would just want to suggest that, and, and, because you have to come up with some way to rank them, and that seems more objective than, um, you know, who do I like best, or, or whatever it would be, yeah.
Right, yeah, and I appreciate those comments, and of course, um, it's not about who I like, and I know that's not how you're intending it, but it's not about who I like, but it's about hearing from you that you trust that any of the members that were listed would be great people to join us and hit the ground running. Um, and then, yeah, there's a, a number of ways that we could figure out how I will bring you that person, um, August twelfth, and I will work with Dr. Hellman on that process, but I likely will send out, um, a call for any suggestions, um, for that process. Okay, so are we ready for a motion? More questions? You're ready to go?
I'm ready to call a question.
Um, all right, so I move that the board direct the chair to recommend a former board member with service as recently as twenty twenty, and to, uh, who has been on the board since twenty twenty, or served on the board since twenty twenty. I move this board direct the chair to recommend a former board member with service as recently as twenty twenty to fill the vacancy created by Noel Stratton's temporary resignation. Um, the board, the former board member should not be running in the upcoming election. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Amy, Anita?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Okay, that was a four, two, four, and so, um, the recommendation passes. We're on to items, yeah, uh, we're on to item. Items for information, item eight, and that is the filling first, uh, filing for school board. The dates are July thirtieth through August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and that will be in the district office. An affidavit for candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk and a two-dollar filing fee paid prior to five P M on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Next is our future meetings. Those are a closed board meeting, Monday, July twenty-second, five P M, in the district boardroom, followed by a workshop also in the boardroom. And Monday, August twelfth and August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, six P M, a regular board meeting here in the district boardroom. That is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Yeah, move by Jeff, second? Am I right? Anita?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we are adjourned. You have one.